Go ahead and call the meetings you order. In order to call, please call and roll.
Dr. Ramona Becker.
Here.
Guy McDonald.
Here.
Betty Martin.
Here.
Diane Nguyen.
Here.
We have a quorum mayor.
Wonderful, and with all of our regularly scheduled meetings, we'll open with a moment of silent prayer, if you'll join me in that. Now, please rise and join us in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance, the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to welcome everybody to our November 21st, 2017, regularly scheduled meeting of your Bel Air City Council. The first thing to come before the council this evening is the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes from our meeting on November 7th.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If there's no questions or anything, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
First and then second. Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Next is appropriations ordinance 17-22, in the amount of $419,234.11. Motion appropriations ordinance 17-22.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve appropriations ordinance 17-22.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Next, we have a city requested appearance. Jared Mann, Director of Finance, has a presentation from Next Level Hoops. So if you want to come up and come to the podium, if you would. Council does have that packet with them.
I just want to thank you all for giving us this opportunity. We're really excited about everything we're doing out there. I don't know how many of you are familiar, have you been to the facility at all? Have you got a chance to walk through it and see what we're doing? Great. Really, I guess, from the beginning, obviously, we started late November 2014, November, broke ground on six courts. Then a few months, we realized we were at max capacity, couldn't really do much in excess of that. We had some tournament organizers approach us, and I don't know if this, is there something to switch the slides? Yeah, okay. There we go. Okay. So as you can see, this is kind of a timeline of where we started, April 2014. It's really when the first arrangements were made to build the facility, and then ground was broke. November 2014 is when the facility was completed, had our grand opening. Soon after, we realized again we're at max capacity, so plans for Phase Two were kind of in the works. April 2016 is when we completed construction, and right from then, we were able to gain access to at least two tournament organizers. One, well, really two from Texas, and one of the gentlemen down there's been running basketball tournaments for over 20 years. He said he's never had to leave the state of Texas because youth basketball's so big there. So he gave us an opportunity. The first tournament we did, we had over 50 teams, and he said you'll be lucky to get 30. So to have those teams come, teams from Texas, Oklahoma, Missouri, we're getting a lot of out-of-state teams. We soon realized that, I don't know if you're familiar with M-A-Y-B, but they do a lot of local tournaments, and since they do tournaments every weekend, they pretty much said that we don't want, they don't want us competing with them. So we were kind of faced with that objection, so we had to really look outside the state, and this was a great opportunity for us. So here's some of the pictures from the original construction. And then here's the grand opening. Again, the owners, I think the mayor's in there somewhere, it's a little bit consorted. And you'll notice that we originally opened as fast-forward facility, and we did do away with that name. We just had an identity crisis, we didn't know what we were going to call it. Hopefully soon, it'll be Bel Air Sports Center, so that is something we would really enjoy. I know the Wichita Hoops is probably sending a bad image to the city of Bel Air, so again, we definitely want to work hand-in-hand with the city. And again, some Phase Two pictures. What we did realize with Phase One, with the original six courts, there was just no seating. So we had places for people to play, but parents couldn't sit, and they couldn't stand, there was just nowhere for them to watch the kids play. So we decided to build a mezzanine just that overlooked both phases. So it was a huge addition to the facility. Not only are people able to go up there and watch on both sides, but during volleyball tournaments, a lot of the volleyball teams will go up there, and that's what they'll call their campsites. So they actually have place to hang out and not have to sit on the side of a court and dodge volleyballs bouncing all over the place. And again, the other thing we had is with NCAA, they require us to separate the college coaches from the general public. It's an NCAA violation if we host a tournament and there's any commingling with the fans and whatnot, so we created a coaches' room. You'll notice in the top-right picture, it's got four court, or four TVs in there, and each TV is wired to each of the courts, so if the coaches don't want to go outside of the room, they can literally just watch the games from in there. It has its own entrance right behind those TVs, so there's a stairwell going outside to a parking lot that we can block off for those college coaches, so at no point in time will they have to intermingle with the parents. So again, this is kind of a little bit blurry, but this is our annual tournament count, and the original plan, when we started the whole business model, was memberships was what was going to drive revenue. We soon found out that tournaments was definitely our number one, it makes up almost 50% of our total revenue. So the tournament count by year, on the left side, you'll see 2014, we had two tournaments in 2014, which we were only open for two months. 2015, we had 18 basketball tournaments, three volleyball tournaments. 2016, again, between 2015 and 2016, that's when M-A-Y-B kind of said, you guys are treading on our water, stop running those tournaments. So we actually dropped down to 13 basketball in 2016 and one volleyball. But in 2017, we, that's when we partnered with Gasso, it was late 2016, Gasso Midwest. So they brought a lot of tournaments from Texas, and we partnered up with them, so we actually jumped to 22 tournaments in 2017. And then we also acquired Deb Phillips. I don't know if anybody is familiar with local volleyball, but she's been doing it for over 20 years here in town. My wife played at her tournaments when she was younger, so she runs the biggest and the best in town. So we were lucky enough to get her here, and she averages anywhere from 30 to 35 teams each weekend. So she'll run a tournament beginning in December, late December, all the way through March, on every single weekend. So again, that's a huge revenue generator for us. So 2017, we had 14 volleyball. 2018, or I guess 2017, we did partner with Mullins, Jerry Mullins. He runs the biggest Kansas tournament in town, or I guess in the state. And I don't know if any of you saw that, we did get some, some pretty big recognition for it. We brought over 400 college coaches into town, and I think we were estimated at just our facility alone, bringing almost $800,000 of economic development within three days of that tournament. So he was excited, he loved it, he loves the facility, and he's already brought in a couple other people in addition to that. So 2018, we're projecting to do about 30 tournaments, 30 basketball, and then again, 14 volleyball in those same weekends, so. And again, here's a little bit of Gasso Midwest. See here, so yeah, there's a three-day tournament in July, we had 112 teams. Majority of them, I believe around 80 of them, were outside of Kansas. So again, we're bringing a lot of teams outside, and again, we are capturing some of those teams that used to play in the M-A-Y-B, just because that's what they were used to, and it was the only tournament provider in town. So again, we were able to capture a lot of, a lot of local teams, but majority of them And as you can see on here, it does say there was nine states, nine states total, just in that July tournament alone. And then here's the Mullins High Profile Tournament. So there's over 350 college coaches in attendance, scouting players, so with the NCAA rules, they only allow a couple weekends each year for college coaches to actually come and watch players, so for their scouting services. So this tournament is, I believe, one of three in the nation that, that they do this, and Mullins has captured all that from doing this over 20 years. So we're very fortunate to, to capture that tournament. And within this tournament, there's a top 100 Juco players in the country that come and play, and that's, that's what really drove those coaches, because a lot of the college basketball coaches recruit from Jucos. So, and some of the names in attendance was Dana Ullman, Chris Mack, Bob Huggins, Greg Marshall, Bruce Weber. So Greg Marshall was there for three days, and he didn't even leave. So he was just there, he loved it, and he was the reason we got this tournament. He came and saw our facility, and he's like, he immediately called Jerry Mullins and said, you've got to have your tournament here, so. And again, this is just an overview of the facility, so some of the things that kind of separate us from any other facility in the country, and we have state-of-the-art retractable goals and nets. We're really proud of our concession stand. I don't know if you're familiar with Dino's, or Greystone, or Oak and Pie, any of these east-side restaurants. We did partner with the owner of those restaurants, so he does run our concession stand, so it's almost doing him a disservice calling it a concession stand. He really enjoys having it, hot food, and people being able to eat real meals at, at a facility, so. And just an overview again, I'm sure many of you have been walked through the facility, seen it, here's just an overview of how it looks. Again, the left side was the original Phase One, and then Phase Two was built in April 2016. So, and in the bottom-left, we do have our own pure performance facility where people can do speed and agility training. So our in-house programs are given that as part of their membership to the facility. And again, more just of a background of the Phase One. And Phase One does still have a traditional concession stand, and there's still people that do like their hot dogs, their nachos, the pretzels, so we didn't want to just do away with that completely, but we just wanted to give people options. We don't want people leaving the facility, obviously, so. And then Phase Two, the reason it was 6,000 square foot more is because we put more space in between the courts and additional 10 feet, because again, just for bleachers and for people to be able to stand and not just be court-to-court. We also added a officials' room, so again, if you go to any other facility, you'll see referees just sitting in a corner in some chairs, and they'll just be hanging out. We actually want to cater to the referees, because they're one of the more important things of a game. You know, we, we realize the importance of keeping them happy. So we gave them their own room. The bigger tournaments, we just provide hospitality for them, too, so we did, we treat them very well, so. And then the courts. One of our owners, he's, he's got basketball in his blood since day one, and it was very important to him to have the best, top-of-the-notch floors. And so what, the floors we have are considered floating floors. They're the number-one floor for presenting, preventing shin splints. The give on the floor provides a good landing, so when kids are jumping up and down, it just prevents shin splints. When Sunrise was practicing at our facility, it was their first year of never having a kid have shin splints. So the little things, you know, we definitely wanted to focus on those. And the pickleballers love it, so they, you know, we get 60, 70-year-olds coming in playing pickleball, and they just absolutely love it. It's not hard on their knees, they can move, and they absolutely love it, so. More kind of focused on the strength and agility training. The trainer that we have, again, we're very fortunate to have him, he's one of the best in town, he's been doing it for over 20 years. He personally trained Perry Ellis and, and some high-profile guys, Buddy Heald, so he has a good connection with the, with the local community, and he's, he's very good at what he does, so. One thing that, again, we, we really want to emphasize the overall scope of what we're doing, so we wanted to provide injury prevention and recovery. So we used to have Blue Chip, and then they decided to part ways, so we were able to bring in Suns Chiropractic. So we always have an athletic trainer on hand. People get kind of scared about the chiropractic name, and they think they just crack backs. He really teaches people how to prevent injury and how to kind of recoup after an injury, so he's very good at what he does. We do offer massage, too, so during tournaments, especially referees who ref eight games or nine games, they can go in there and get a 10, 15-minute massage real quick, just to relax. So it's very, it's very comfortable, and again, it's offsetting, so it's, it's nice and quiet. And here's kind of a list of the, the services that we offer, and then the partners along the right side. So again, some of the tournaments we do each year, we've got, like I said, for 2018, projecting about 44 tournaments between basketball and volleyball. And again, the picture's a little distorted, but the top-left picture is actual picture of our Mullins Tournament with over 350 college coaches, and they literally are swarming one court, watching the top 100 Juco players. So it's very neat to have that kind of presence, just, you know, in Wichita, or Bel Air for that matter, so. And we do offer training for basketball and volleyball. We're not just about getting the best players in town, but we're also about developing those kids that want to learn how to play. Leagues is a new thing that we've kind of started. Again, with M-A-Y-B basically saying you can't do tournaments without us doing them at your facility, we said, well, if we can't do tournaments, we're going to do leagues. And so that's one thing that we're really trying to grow, and I think this upcoming session that'll start in January will have 16 teams. So it's, it's a great opportunity for kids to get better and play weekly, and not just have to play in tournaments all the time, and worry about playing back-to-back-to-back. They get to come, play one game, practice all week, and it's also an opportunity for us to get outside teams to come in that don't want to be part of a big program, so. And again, camps and clinics, you know, again, that's something that we want to offer them. We used to offer them to our in-house kids, but again, we didn't want to just continue having people get training and practice and then camps. We wanted to be able to offer everything, but we kind of focused on getting outside camps to come in. So we had a Cle Anthony Early Camp in July 2015, and then this past year, we were fortunate enough to get Frank Mason to come in, and he had a camp, and there was well over 100 kids, so. We also do a Jeff Hill Camp, which gets about 150 kids, and that's for the underprivileged kids. It's actual, actually a free camp that lasts all week, and we literally just give them the courts, we don't even charge them. So it's kind of us helping give back to the community, and we get Xavier McDaniel and Chees Johnson, some of those former WSU players, they come in and they host the tournament. So it's very well organized, and it's just a great opportunity for us to give back, so. Again, some of the high-profile people that Tim has trained, strength and conditioning, again, skating agility, he does pretty much everything you can think of. More about the injury prevention, chiropractic adjustment, massage therapy and everything. And then here's kind of our staff. So Justin Jarman's our new general manager. Again, with us realizing that tournaments was going to be our number-one revenue generator, we decided to make Carlos Perez the Vice President of Basketball Operations. He was the general manager as of August 2017 this year. He's basically been tasked with going out and getting more tournament organizers to come in, like a Mullins, like a Gasso, like a Premier Basketball. So obviously, I'm the finance manager. We brought Joe in to help with the membership management, and Tim Semenow does our strength and conditioning. He's also our director for the Wichita Hoops League and our Wichita Hoops Academy, and then Clay does our marketing, so. And just an overall scope of what we're doing. Next Level Hoops Academy is the boys' basketball side. It's the higher-end Next Level kids, basketball players that they actually have to make the teams do the tryouts. They're really after the 1%. So to kind of combat that, we created the Hoops Academy, which we go after the B, C, D kids. We just want kids to come in, we want them to play, and we want to be the reason they get better. We don't want to just put our name on a kid who's already at that level, so. Next Level Eclipse is a girls' basketball program. Again, they're after the, the 1% of the kids. Same thing with the Mavs, you have to try out and be part, you have to make those teams. Midwest Volleyball is the tournament organizer, she's the one that does the 14 tournaments. And then Footsaw Wichita was a new thing, we started last year, and I don't know if you're familiar with Footsaw, but it's basically indoor soccer on a basketball court. They play with a heavier ball, so it can't get as much lift, and they play, I believe, five-on-five with the goalie. And so it's been a huge hit. We were able to get, I believe, FC Wichita and some of those bigger basketball pro, or soccer programs to come in and use our facility. We're right at 32 teams right now, so again, we're just keeping that place filled, and we actually had to turn a lot of teams away, because we only built three Footsaw courts, not knowing it was going to be that big. So I've personally been tasked with having to grow that and get 100 teams in 2018, so. And then Pickleball Wichita. We, we've tried tournaments, it's worked, but pickleballers are very competitive, and they don't want to play somebody they're going to beat, so we, we let those organizers do it themselves, because the last thing we want is pickleball people upset, so. It's been, it's definitely been trending. This month, we offered half-price memberships, and it's grown substantially. Within the first 15 days, we had already doubled memberships, so it was very exciting for pickleball. And then WGL's an esports program that we also have going on, for those kids that aren't really sports or, I guess, agile, they, they are more of the gaming community. So again, we want to be enticing to everything going on. That's really a growing industry, so we want to be able to capture that, too, especially with 106,000 square feet. We want to be able to get those teams in, too. Next Level Hoops Academy, Jason Perez is the owner of it. Membership stats, 2015, he had 17 teams, 16, he had 21 teams, 2017, 23, and then 2018, 25. So really, he's not too excited about growing, because he doesn't want to saturate the program. It's the same concept with the volleyball, same concept with the girls' basketball. Again, they're after the 1% kids, and so they don't, they don't want to just bring anybody and everybody in, because they're very competitive, and they want the best talent on those programs, so. Same thing with Next Level Eclipse. Membership numbers, 64, 82, so the number of teams, 14, 18, 21. So they really don't want to get any higher than that 30 threshold. Again, that just becomes saturated, and then any kids left over are going to go down to the Hoops Academy program, and it's more of a skill-based training, so. Wichita Hoops Academy, we just started in 2016. The first year we did it, we had 27 members, and then 2017, we had 61 members. So again, parents want their kids to play. They want them to learn how to play the game, and they don't want to worry about their kid being the worst on a team and having to sit the bench the whole time, so that's why we were able to create this. Now the kids can just go out and play, and we try to get them enough competition to where they're getting better, so. Again, ICT Mavs is the volleyball program, and the membership numbers and the number of teams. He's kind of said that 20 teams is going to be his max, so he's just trying to keep the, the best competition possible. I think last year, his team was ranked sixth overall in the nation, so he's very proud of his team, and they do a great job with their training program. Deb Phillips, again, she's the volleyball organizer. Again, she's been doing it for over 20 years, just a great lady. She's very good at what she does, we're very fortunate to have her, so. And pickleball memberships, again, started at 38, 2016, 2017, 86, and then 2018. Those numbers are on a monthly basis, so that's the kind of traffic that we're generating from pickleball usage. And then Footsaw Wichita, again, was created in 2016. 2017, we're up to 32 teams, projecting 45 for 2018, and that's early 2018. So again, by late 2018, we want to be at the 100 mark, once we build more courts, since that's the max we can have with three courts. And then the gaming league, we had six events in 2016, 11, 2017, 18, 2018. So again, it's a very hard market to get into, gamers don't want to leave their house, so they're very comfortable sitting at home, playing the games. So we're able to offer a prize for a lot of those games, and it's just getting them out of their home and out of their comfort zone.
I believe that might be it.
Okay. So does anybody have any questions for me?
Mr. Mayor.
I have a question. You mentioned about $800,000 in local revenue that was generated, I think, in 2017. What do you project for 2018?
It's not going to be double that, I would say it's going to be well over a million, though, so. And it was very conservative, again, I kind of threw the numbers together myself. Again, I don't, I don't want to over-project, but I like to be comfortable and know where we're headed and what kind of money we're generating, not only for ourselves, but also the community. Basically, how I was able to get to those numbers, the Mullins Tournament alone, we projected about 4,000 people in total traffic within a three-day span. Half of those people stayed two nights at $100 each at a hotel, looking at about 400,000 just in hotel revenue. If half of them ate two meals for two days at $15 a meal, it's $120,000 in meals. So I mean, just trying to be as conservative as possible, but somewhat realistic, just to know what we're generating.
Thank you.
Jared, I want to thank you so much for being here. I remember that grand opening, and you had Jonathan Coachman, and ESPN was there, and, standing room only, for sure, and anytime you get ESPN to come. And to hear some of the names that you've mentioned in the coaches' room and all of that, that is incredible, and of course, we look forward to it being called Bel Air.
Yeah, absolutely.
But I had to get that in there, but I do appreciate you being here and sharing all this information about your growth and projections and everything that you guys have been able to accomplish this year. That certainly is exciting, and I know, we'll look here at this ordinance, we certainly want, you know, we want you guys to be, stay profitable and growing, because that in turn helps the city out considerably.
Yeah, absolutely.
I have a question. I am really glad you're here, and I think it just looks like a wonderful operation and lots of fun for kids and a good thing to happen. And I'm totally not into sports personally, you know, I don't know that much about it. I used two years ago, when I was a cheerleader, but since that time, I haven't paid much attention. This organization that you mentioned that shut the door so to- you mentioned that shut the door, so to speak, on your weekend tournaments, what is that again? MAY?
MAYB.
Could you tell me more about that?
Yeah, they've been doing tournaments, local tournaments, for well over 20 years. And they're very leery of people coming in and running tournaments because it takes teams from their events. And then they, that's, that's where they make their money, is doing youth basketball tournaments. Soon after we opened, we tried to run our own event and they, they pretty much said, "You're taking teams from our tournaments. If you want to, that's fine, but we're not going to rent out your facility to, to run some of those tournaments." Some of the bigger ones they do is the MAYB appreciation tournament, summer kickoff, winter kickoff. They get well over 200 teams in some of those tournaments. So it's, it's in our best interest not to really infringe on that because they do use our facility. They will rent all 12 courts for two, sometimes three days. So again, that's not really any toes we want to step on at this time. But we do have to be leery about running just local tournaments and trying to get local teams to come play in those tournaments because it's, it's taking teams from their events.
So they're both your customer and your competitor?
Exactly.
Well, that's an interesting situation there.
Yeah.
I wondered why they could tell you what to do.
Yeah. Yeah. So we have to be, we have to be cautious of how we run our tournaments, when we run them, who we invite, and, and make sure they're okay with it, so.
Okay. Well, thank you for that explanation.
No problem.
Any other questions, or guests? All right. Thank you so much for being here.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And we'll probably hear from Kevin here in a few minutes and we'll talk about that. With that, I'm going to move us into citizens' concerns. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to address council this evening. Here and now, we'll move into reports. We'll start with a council, council member report. Start with Councilmember Martine.
About the only thing I have is I hope the employees have a wonderful two days off for Thanksgiving and wish everybody else good turkey days at their home with their families and loved ones.
Councilwoman Win.
I did attend the Chamber of Commerce mixer. That was last Monday night. I had an eye doctor's appointment right before, so I was late getting there, but I think it was Monday night. I was well-attended with people from Bel Air, Park City, and Valley Center, I believe, plus some dignitaries. Carolyn McGinn was there and some others that I probably can't remember. That, of course, is just a really social kind of thing, but we try to do that a couple, three times a year. And so I think the next time will be Bel Air's turn. And then I also attended the legislative session, which was on Thursday. As you can tell, my schedule's been a little crazy. I'm not sure what day today is. But this was honing in on some of the, very definitely some of the legislative things that will be coming, you know, before session. And deep discussion on some of them as to how it will affect mostly economic development, quite frankly. And so, interesting to hear other cities take on that kind of thing. So I've been a little busy, but that's all I have.
Well, I've been mostly busy on personal things and, and that's been keeping me kind of running. But I'm just going to echo Betty Martine's, Councilmember Betty Martine's, good wishes for everybody in Bel Air to have a wonderful Thanksgiving with their families and for the staff to enjoy their time off. It's such a blessing to live in a place that is safe and peaceful and free. And so we all have a lot to be thankful for here.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have an official report, but as I was watching the presentation this evening, I'm the one who is closest to the television. My eyes are not particularly bad, but it was difficult to read some of the things. And I'm going to ask council just to put in the back of your mind the possibility of getting a larger television for the council members to watch. And I think it would be easier on anyone who makes a presentation to, you know, I think it would improve the presentation if we considered that. And that's the end of what I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
Appreciate that. All right. I have no formal report, but do want to let everybody know I was able to attend the Taste of Italy. And again, it was a...
I forgot that.
Yeah, it was really good. I think Elizabeth decided to fall asleep right before the music started, though, somehow. But we weren't able to stay long as we wanted. And it seemed like it was a much larger crowd this year than I can remember. You guys have numbers on that. But, and of course, all proceeds of that are going to go back to benefit the community. So we want to thank the Lions Club for that. And it's also exciting to, we're talking about Thanksgiving up here. You're seeing Christmas lights go up here at City Hall already, at homes. You're seeing the banners along Wood Lawn welcoming everybody here. And I'm really liking this town feeling that they're starting to come out with that. And then, of course, we do have our Christmas Open House Saturday, December the 2nd. It's going to be on a Saturday this year from 5:00 to 8:00. We'll have our community tree lighting. First time they've ever, we're going to do that as a group at 5:30. Lots of treats, pictures of Santa Claus. There's going to be some Christmas crafts and just a lot of fun. I saw that the cutouts, you can take your picture with. So bring the whole family on. And again, it's on a Saturday from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. on December 2nd. Then finally, I just want to remind everybody, and I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, our CCUA meeting will not take place this Thursday for obvious reasons, and that has been moved to the 30th. So we'll meet next week if you're interested in attending the CCUA meeting. And with that, I will pass it on to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to just talk about political signs. The Public Works Department was thankful for all candidates quickly removing their signs after the election. They were able to get to the places they needed to mow the next day really quickly and without any issues. And this response just kind of plays down the idea that your decision to allow signs in the right of way could create a mess for the city. So it turned out to be just fine in that area. As far as the federal law, the House passed the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act, which could impact the ability of cities to conduct advanced refinancing of bond issues. And so for us, that might be an issue that could prevent cities from paying bond issues early, reducing their ability to refinance bonds once they're established, or restructuring bonds prior to the bond's maturing. And it also, the House version, the House's version of the bill eliminates private activity bonds altogether, which I guess specifically in our city, we've only had one private activity bond in the past 10 years. So that's not such a big deal for Bel Air. And as far as reducing the ability to refinance or restructure bonds once they're put into place for the duration of the bond, we've had the foresight to restructure and refinance a lot of our bonds. So we're actually in a good position. But that said, it does impact future new bonds that cities might want to pass or refinance. So we're keeping our eye on it. Our bond council has been alerting us and a lot of cities are concerned about that aspect of the Tax Act. Last thing, I'll just let you all know. The county is considering a potential Tyson's, Tyson Food Project being built here in Cedric County. We know it's not in Bel Air. Everything that we know thus far, the project would be on the west side. However, they are taking input from the public. And we are in the county. So at this point, if anybody wanted to chime in, they could directly contact the county by going online and letting their voice be heard. That's all I have.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to remind our citizens at home that City Hall will be closed Thursday and Friday due to Thanksgiving. So we are open tomorrow. If anybody needs to conduct any business, feel free to stop by. And then the mayor covered the open house, which is scheduled in December 2nd. So that was all ahead. Mayor.
All right. Well, we'll write into ordinances, resolutions, and final actions then. The first thing to come before council this evening is the ordinance authorizing an amendment. This is for payments in lieu of taxes, otherwise known as pilot. And we do have Kevin Cowan is here. So he's going to come on up because we just heard the presentation from Next Level Hoops. And as I stated when Jared was up here earlier, you know, we certainly are encouraged by the growth and the, the impact and all that that they're bringing to the city. I think all that's going to, to help us out. So the ordinance before council tonight simply eliminates those pilot payments for 2018 and 19. What the original schedule's going to remain the same for the other years. So Kevin, I'll let you talk a little bit more about that.
Sure. The payment in lieu of taxes agreements were entered into in connection with issues of industrial revenue bonds that financed the building, buildings that were mentioned earlier. And so one of those issues was from 2014. The other one was in 2015. Those projects, as, as you'll recall, in connection with some other projects, can be eligible for a property tax abatement. In fact, by statute, they are exempt from property taxes. And frequently, what the city then does is negotiate, as part of the industrial revenue bond package, a payment in lieu of taxes, which is also authorized by statute. So it's, you get an order from the Board of Tax Appeals that says this property is exempt from property taxes, but the statutes provide that you can have a payment in lieu of taxes during that 10-year time period that you'd have an exemption. So those payments in lieu of taxes were negotiated as part of the original bond issues. And Mr. Mayor, as you mentioned, this would be a variance from that. Those payment in lieu of taxes agreements were originally approved by ordinance of the city. And so we have an ordinance that would approve the amendments to those. And I'll just mention, if you flip through the payment in lieu of taxes agreements as amended, they can appear a little bit confusing, but you actually have three different payment in lieu of taxes periods of time. And in connection with the 2014 bonds, that exemption ran from 15 through 24 years, 2015 through 24, because the abatement or exemption begins the calendar year following the year in which bonds are issued. And then in 2015, those bonds were drawdown bonds, we call them. And so they were drawn during a period of time in 2015 and 2016. So technically, you had two different starting places of the 10-year periods. One started in 2016 in connection with the bonds issued or drawn upon in 2015, and the other period started in 2017. So if you, if you flip through the agreement, there's a recognition that they're two different time periods on one of the bond issues. And so the percentages recognize that. So having said all of that, that's the background. And your decision is simply adopt the ordinance, pass the ordinance, and approve the payment in lieu of taxes agreements as amended or changed.
Appreciate that. As I read through that, I mean, as we are still in the middle of the tax abatements.
Right.
So not changing that, just the pilot.
And you can't extend it. I, I do want to reiterate that. It's 10 years. So it's really just changing within those 10-year periods what amounts would be paid for payments in lieu of taxes.
Any other questions, or comments, on the ordinance before us this evening?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing an amendment to agreements for payment in lieu of taxes for a property tax abatement relating to the city of Bel Air, Kansas, a taxable industrial revenue bonds, Series 2014 and Series 2015, parentheses Wichita Hoops LLC, end parentheses, issued for the purposes of acquiring, constructing, furnishing, and equipping a sports facility and authorizing the execution of documents necessary or desirable to effect the transaction contemplated hereby, and authorize the mayor to sign all related
Second? First, and we have a second. Any other questions or comments? Here and now, being in ordinance, I will call for the roll call vote. Dr. Becker?
Aye.
Guy McDonald?
Aye.
Betty Martine?
Aye.
Diane Nguyen?
Aye.
Okay. And well, Scott is still here. We'll talk about Empire Wall. I know Empire Wall is completing their finances and they're also completing the IRB. So basically, tonight, these are certain documents that are required so that we can complete the IRB. So do I understand that with the resolution that's going to approve those agreements?
Yes. It's sort of technical stuff, but yeah, the Empire Wall project was financed with industrial revenue bonds issued earlier this year. The company itself bought those bonds. And now, as we near the end of, of that, they're putting in place a financing sort of separate from the bonds with the bank that, that would cover sort of their purchase of the bonds. So the bonds are, are a financing under our state law, but the, the financing with the bank is really sort of the true financing for Empire Wall. The structure of that issue is the city owns title to the real property. They lease it to the company. The company would make lease payments, which really would, would fund the bond payments back to them. It's the bond owner. And what this set of documents would do was, would allow Vintage Bank to provide, again, that, that commercial financing. And it asks for a consent and approval to a leasehold mortgage. So Empire Wall is no longer the owner of the property. The city is. So to the extent Empire Wall can grant a mortgage on that property, it's going to be a leasehold mortgage. And they need the city's consent to do that as the owner of the property. And really, when the dust settles, these various documents are approved, Vintage Bank becomes the primary lien holder on the property because they, they have provided the financing. So again, it's, it's sort of technical stuff. And one of the things to keep in mind is that the bondholder, which would typically be considered sort of a lien holder, a secured party, is the company in this case. So it's not as if you have a couple of competing creditors where you're going to grant some prior interest to a later creditor. You just have, the company is the bondholder. And now they're getting financing from Vintage Bank and they're willing, is the company, to allow Vintage Bank to have a prior lien to their bonds. And, and again, the city needs to consent to that as a party to all of those documents.
Thank you very much. Any questions here on item B? Anybody like to make a motion?
I guess I do have one question. Since we now have another party involved, which is Vintage Bank, what happens if Vintage Bank ceases to exist for unknown reasons?
It's a good question. I don't think it would impact the bonds at all. They're not becoming a party to any of the bond transactions. Not becoming a party to any transaction that the city's involved in. It, again, is just the city consenting to a transaction between Empire Wall and the bank, which happens to involve property that the city is leasing to Empire Wall. So, so be assured of that. It wouldn't impact, impact the bond transaction at all. And I'm just trying to think off the top of my head, if, if the bank ceased to exist, their lien probably eventually would be owned by somebody else, maybe some other bank that takes over their operations. And, and again, they'll have liens and documents in favor of them... And again, they'll have liens and documents in favor of themselves in their arrangement with Empire Wall. And I guess technically with the city as well, because the city's consenting to it. But, but the bank is providing the true financing. The city has been a pass-through here. And so, I don't think the city is left in any worse position if something happens with Vintage Bank.
I'm not suggesting anything. I just know that they're a small bank. And so, thank you.
And it's highly technical things, and the city always acts as a pass-through in this regard and in this capacity. And so, the transaction is really between Empire Wall and the bank, and the fact that you acted as a pass-through on the transaction is the reason we're before you asking for these sorts of consents and additional documents.
Thank you, Kevin.
Mr. Mayor? I think that traditionally, if a bank fails, as you said, someone else is going to acquire the assets of that bank, of that bank, whatever they are, no matter how big or small they are. And so, when someone else acquires it, then they have the responsibilities that the smaller bank had, in this case Vintage Bank. So, I don't think there's going to be a problem with a failure of a bank, because as you also said, the owner of Empire Wall are the bondholders. And so, I don't see, I don't see any problem with that. Having said that, if no one else wants to read that lengthy
[laughing]
motion, I will take, I will take that responsibility. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the governing body of the City of Bel Air, Kansas, to consent to a subordination and consent agreement and an acknowledgement agreement related to the city's taxable industrial revenue bonds, Series 2017, parentheses Empire Wall Systems Incorporated, end parentheses, and to authorize the execution and delivery of the documents relating to a loan by Vintage Bank, Kansas, to Empire Wall Systems Incorporated, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll start.
Any firsts and a second? Any questions or comments on the resolution? Hearing now, a call for the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Propose, sign, pass. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, and next, we're going to move on to item C, which is a, our city engineer is requesting a change order with Meads Construction for talking Rock Spring, the second edition, Phase One. In the past, our city crews have installed meter cans and setters that after, you know, that's after the project was completed, and they've been moving away from this practice with other developments, and would like to have the construction company install these when the water mains are being installed, which is why we have the change order before tonight. The cost would then be spread with the special assessments. And I see Ann is here this evening, so anybody have any questions or want to explain anything more on that?
Good evening. Just a few clarifications. The Rock Spring, Phase One, is a phase that has already been constructed. Previous engineer had made arrangements with this developer that we would just put in water service lines and leave the meter cans for city forces to install. Those meter cans were never charged against the project as they should have been, as they have been in numerous other developments around the city. Myself and the city of manager have been working with the developer. That practice has changed on Rock Spring, Second, Phase Two. So, those are all getting the full meter cans, everything. One of the problems with, that we have encountered as staff, when the meter cans are not installed with the project or shortly thereafter, is there's driveways in the way of where we have to dig down to the water main to be able to turn the service on. That's left off, so we just have a pipe across the street. We have to connect to the pipe across the street to put the meters, the water meter on as well as the can. We have to turn on the service line at the main. If there's concrete in the way, that's more expense for the city, or we have to bore new line. So, doing it now, there's no concrete in the way. We're going to get everything done at once. If the builders run over these meter cans and they need to replace the can or the lid or whatever has been broken, we have found that putting a snow fence teepee around these meter cans does help protect them and brings contractors' attention to them. In working with the finance director, the, we did not have enough money in the project to spread these as specials, so they will be coming part from the city water budget and part from the city sewer budget. This is where the funding has been coming for these particular projects in the past, so nothing has changed on that. But it has changed for this Rock Spring, Second, Phase Two, and all projects go moving forward. All the meter cans, all, everything associated with the service is in the project, so it will be spread as specials. A little confusing because we've got the two different phases there, but I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on how things were working.
Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Explanation on the different phases.
Yeah, it's very confusing.
Mr. Mayor? I have some questions for Ann. You said install the meter cans, but you're not going to install the meter?
The meter gets installed when the builder or whomever requests service.
Property you sold?
That is paid for. There is a meter installation fee that just covers the meter itself. It does not cover the can, the setter, or the service.
And the setter will be installed also?
Correct, by, by the contractor.
Okay. I am confused about this. How did this happen? You know?
The previous engineer worked out a deal with the developer. In the very first phase of Rock Spring, I was involved with the observation of that project. We had everything installed, the water meter cans, the services, the setters, everything was there. When the builders came in, they just ran all over the site and broke things right and left. I think we had to replace just about every single meter lid on the project. So, at some point between that first phase and now, it was worked out a deal where we wouldn't put in the meter cans, the lids, the setters. They'd just run the service line across the street to avoid that cost. Well, our city forces have found, A, it's hard to find those service lines when there's nothing above ground, because everybody's driven over it and broken it off. And number two, if there's a house that was built across the way with their driveway, then we can't dig down to turn that service on. So, we have to, without tearing out concrete, which is more expense to the city. So, if we can just do everything ahead of time with the project, or in this case, shortly after that, before concrete's poured for the driveways, then it's just significantly less money.
So, the remedy didn't really work that you tried?
Correct.
Uh-huh.
Yes. It was a good thought, but put into practice, you found that it really didn't work, as hoped.
Okay, well, that's life, I guess.
Unfortunately.
You learn by experience.
Yes.
And is, is this going to be more expensive than, you know, to?
It works out to be about $850 per service line. Now, these are duplexes, so there's two per lot, which is about $1,700 per lot. And that's really close to what we would spend doing it if you counted in our labor and our equipment. So, while it is more expensive than the initial project, it's got to be done eventually, and it's not our folks doing it. You don't have to worry if there's concrete driveways in the way of somewhere you need to be. And we don't waste time, don't waste half a day digging to try and find the service.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, well, good luck.
It's confusing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
You did say that there's money in the water and the sewer to pay for this?
Yes. And Ted is also here, if you have any questions for that. But he assured me there was money available.
And going forward, new developments will have the new procedure?
That is correct. We've already started that with the Rock Spring, Second, Phase Two, the south half of Rock Spring, Second, as well as the Rock Spring, Phase Five. Everything's installed up front.
And the builders will be responsible for what they break?
Correct.
I heard that.
Yes. Sometimes they point fingers, hey, it wasn't me, it was a concrete guy, but we're working to try and make sure that is.
We had that on several sidewalks over there.
How about some cameras out there?
[laughing] I could talk to Chief about his trail cam.
Okay.
Well, thank you for that presentation. So, we do have the four council this evening, this change order, and it is in the amount of $40,800. Again, this was going to be to install the meter cans, setters, and the snow fences for the protection, and then, of course, relocate those existing water mains. I appreciate the explanation about it being in Phase Two and being able to be spread as specials.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would like to make a motion to approve the change order with Meads Construction in the amount of $40,800 and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
First and second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose, same. And final item to come before council this evening, item D is consideration of changing the office hours here at City Hall. This, our finance director, Ted, and our city manager have done some research. It's actually, a council member brought that, brought this up. Might be a good idea to look at this. And so, after our city manager spoke with the City Hall employees, and also, I do want to mention that the City of Derby also has been doing this. The recommendation is for new office hours to be established from 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., Monday through Thursday. City Hall's still open on Friday, but that would be from 7:30 to 1 o'clock. And the, I'll just say that the numbers that they've been tracking, very few, very, 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 single, single numbers seem to come in Friday afternoons. The idea with this is that those working eight to five now have 30 minutes before and 30 minutes after if they need to come by and do something quickly at City Hall so that we can have, you know, more time there during the day. Do appreciate the fact that all the current City Hall staff were consulted and talked about that, see what they thought about that, like in the daycare issues and all of those things that can come up. So, and again, Ted and Ty are happy to answer any questions if anybody has any of those, but this force this evening is the idea to change the hours, City Hall, Monday through Thursday, 7:30 to 5:30, and then Fridays from 7:30 to 1 p.m. And should point out that the changes would take effect after the New Year.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have some questions for either Ted or Mr. Lasher. I don't understand the holiday on Friday's schedule. Do you expect people to come in at 12:30 a.m.? I thought, boy, that's a long day.
It's a hard, it's a, it's a hard thing to do with our staff, just because I wanted to give you, on page three there was kind of an example of what a normal staff person's weeks would look like. So, the regular schedule, on Monday, they'd come in at 7:30, leave at 5:30, nine hours, nine-hour day. On Tuesday, it'd be a nine-hour day. On Wednesday, because of our, our new schedule would be 41 and a half hours total if you worked every, so we can't have people work over 40. So, on a Wednesday, they'd come in at 9:00 and to make up for that hour and a half and leave at 5:30, so they wouldn't have to work long days all week. Holidays is the one thing we say is, there's no change as far as a holiday. You get eight hours of credit for each employee, because not all employees are going to go to this schedule. So, what happens on the second schedule, on the holiday, or on the third, with Council Member Martine's question, on Fridays, on Fridays, you, we're only open five and a half hours. So, you would have five and a half hours of holiday on, on the Friday, and then you'd have to spend two and a half hours sometime in the week, the same pay period, or the same week, to make up for that eight hours that you get for the holiday. So, basically, you're only using 5.5 hours on Friday if the holiday happens to fall on a Friday, so you get an additional two and a half hours. What, what I suggest and what my employees will do is, because they have set days, that they come in early on Wednesday. So, on this example, on Wednesday, they come in at 9:00. If there's a holiday on a Friday, they'll come in at 12:30, it's supposed to be p.m. Thank you for catching that. So, so that, so that it becomes consistent, yeah. And that seems to work the best. I will note, Derby does this, and basically, they have enough people to cover all the schedules. We're a smaller operation, so it'll be, it'll require a lot of, some organization on our part, which we're willing to do. Valley Center has flex schedules as well, but again, they have enough people to cover, so they don't adjust their time. They just say, hey, everybody have flex schedules. So, a lot of the cities and a lot of really employees are moving towards this model. A lot of my classes at my MPA all talked about this new generation, this new workforce we come in, we have to adjust, we have to, because we have two parents working. The other big thing to look at, and I think I started, is really the 7:30 to 5:30 being open is really going to benefit a lot of citizens, I believe, because we see it all the time, right at 5:00, people running to come in and pay their bill. And we like to stay, we always stay open an extra 15 if someone's there, but, you know, we have, we work eight to five, so we don't want to stay too long after. So, this is a year project that we've been doing, tracking and kind of evaluating, so I'll be happy to answer any questions you have, but all the staff and we feel that this might be a really good thing for all parties involved.
Mr. Mayor? Okay. I came in on a Friday one time. I didn't realize what time it was, what day it was, and I commented to the staff that, boy, the traffic is really heavy. Then I said, oh, it's Friday, so some people don't work at all on Fridays, and some people work half-days on Fridays. And so, and staff seemed to be, seemed to think positively about that possibility. So, could you tell me if there were any staff members who were against this plan? You don't have to make any name, but I'm just curious as to, how many were against it, and give me some typical reasons.
Ty could probably answer all these questions. I'm here tonight for my staff. That's, that's their commitment, and they, they really feel strong that this would prove their lives and really act as a fringe benefit as well, that the city can offer at no cost.
Another question would be the fact of, I've already asked about the staff not being in, oh, is this going to be limited to City Hall, or is it going to be elsewhere in other departments? And I understand the police department is on 24/7, so they're not going to be affected by it unless a staff comes up with a, a means by which the police department could also benefit from something like this?
I talked to every, every department head, explained what we were doing. I believe the planning and zoning will join us, so that'd be Keith and Jason. And that's really because a lot of my, my staff runs permits. Keith said he's, his last inspection's usually at 1:00 on Friday, so that's not going to be a big deal. And contractors will get used to the new schedule, just, and it actually might benefit for it. I was talking to him, he's getting a lot of home, homeowners that are making improvements, and this might help them come in and get a permit as well. Recreation, talked to Brian, they're going to stay on the same schedule that they currently are. They're a separate facility, and they, they appreciate that. Talked to Ann, Public Works, they currently work 7:00 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. They like their sched, I'm sorry, geez, 3:30 p.m. They like getting up early, I think, and doing what needs to be done as far as public work sites, so they're going to stay, remain the same as well. And then also salaried employees, that really doesn't have an effect on them, because they're, you know, obviously required to do the job and, you know, required to have 40 hours as well.
Well, relative to the salaried employees, will they also have Well, relative to the salaried employees, will they also have similar hours? For example, Ty and you, would you come in at 7:30 in the morning?
I currently come in at 7:30 right now because I have to pick up my daughter at five. I imagine the way Ty kind of put it is sometimes it might be a good thing for some of us to have no distractions and can work on Friday, Friday afternoon if we need to. Also, yes, we'll be able to do the same if I'm, and I plan on working with my staff because it's a lot, it's a lot better as a supervisor to be there when they need help or any type of thing.
Yeah, I would encourage the management staff to take advantage of that early Friday if they can. It's understandable if they have a workload that has to be worked on, then they just do what they have to do. But thank you for your explanations. I was not aware that there were so many different departments that would work their schedule differently. Thank you again.
The only other question I had is all the employees will still be forced to take a 15 minute break?
Yep. Yep.
And they'll all get a lunch hour except on the Wednesday, the holiday on Friday schedule because they don't work over four hours?
Yeah, and they come in at 12:30, so yeah, that's.
Okay. Thank you.
And then one more thing, and I just want to, Public Works is going to, so on shut off days, I don't know if your water was somehow shut off, you came home at five, it'd be nice to be able to call someone and get it turned back on. We'll be able to extend that service, the shut off service, to 5:30 on shut off days only. So that's another added bonus to the schedule.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Will that employee stay till 5:30?
Yes.
That's designated to go turn the water back on, or is he going to be called in from?
No, he's going to stay till 5:30 on shut off day. Technically, the policy says we have 24 hours, but 10 are.
Oh, probably that.
Yeah.
I don't think so.
And I would note that, you know, online payments are 24/7 and we have a Dropbox out here that is 24/7 as well, and you can put that in, so.
Questions or comments on item D? Now I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve new office hours for City Hall to take effect on January the 3rd, 2018.
Second.
First and second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Discussion and future issues? Anybody have anything they'd like to bring before council? I have no need for an executive session this evening.
I do have one thing I'd like to mention. I think it would be good for the city to possibly entertain the idea of opting out of the new state law about signs for campaigns before we have another campaign because I think that was rather messy. And, you know, for the city not to be able to bow as they usually do in those areas that were opened up for signs with the new state law, I think it might be good to consider that in the future, that we would go with the federal law like the City of Wichita And I want to tell you, our city attorney, I really did appreciate that good report you gave us tonight. That's something, you mentioned some things that we really need to be aware of, could affect our future. Thank you.
Any other business come before council this evening? Hearing done, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Before I make that motion, that light up there, I'm going to knock it out if they don't move it because it's right in my eyes. I couldn't see anything on TV. It's the second one. And now I'll make the motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Same. Sign. We are adjourned, 8:15.